Good evening. This is the Tuesday, October 11th, meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anybody else in the audience recording the meeting tonight? And representative from the -- what's the telegram? Is that -- thank you. Being none others, we will salute and stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Under public comment, we have Ms. Darlene Coyle, and that's on the flu clinic.
Hi, good evening. Just wanted to remind residents and the selectmen that we have a senior flu clinic scheduled for tomorrow at the Senior Center. It's going to be from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and we'll have a couple of nurses there. We'll have -- we'll be giving out shots. We encourage seniors age 60 and older in those 50 and over with immunocompromised immune systems, anybody that has heart conditions and so forth that need a shot. We will be vaccinating tomorrow from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., noon time, Wednesday, October 12th. It's at the Senior Center for Garter Drive. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a couple of public hearings. I want to just advise those members in the public hearings tonight, we only have three members, and we have to have three affirmative votes in order to pass licenses. If you wish to continue, we will. The first one is from Greed Summit and the express stopper wine and malt package store with license at 321 Southbridge Street in Auburn. Is there a representative here? Would you please come forward? Good evening. Okay, can you state your name for the --
My name is Joe. Last name's Raish.
Okay. And what is your plans, Joe?
I was just looking to get a beer and wine license at that location, something that's been requested ever since I've been open, probably the most out of anything. So I figured I'd come in and apply and try to get it for the customers.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board? Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
What's your knowledge and understanding of TIPS certification?
I've never -- I own six other places.
Oh, sorry. Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Can I get a procedure here?
Oh, well, she can open the hearing.
And --
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Continue.
I own multiple locations. This is the first one. I've had beer and wine locations. This is the first one out this way where I'm selling beer and wine. So, I mean, I understand about the age, how old you have to be. There's a POS system on site now. Where someone were to purchase, let's say alcohol, in order to complete the sale, you got to have a date of birth in there. Those are the type of precautions I'm going to take. What was the other question?
So are you aware that there needs to be someone on-site at all times who is TIPS certified, T-I-P-S certified?
No, I didn't. That wasn't mentioned to me. If that's the case, then we got to do it.
So it's educational, alcohol education awareness in serving alcohol? And shows you how to legally and properly sell alcohol?
Okay.
It's an important part of your license?
Okay.
And so, Mr. Chairman, if I may, since he doesn't understand, has no knowledge of TIPS, how many employees do you have?
Right now, four.
Are you on-site at all times? Explain to me the shifts.
Not at all times. I do go in there a few times a day, but I'm not there every hour of the day.
Okay. So is there one employee at all times? Are there two employees?
There's one at all times. Sometimes there's two, depending on the time and the shift, because they overlap each other, you know, for stocking, cleaning, and other stuff. But a majority of the day, there's one person on shift. I'd say 70% of the time.
Okay. So where is the beer and wine going to be stored?
The locking cooler.
Which is in relation to the register? Where in relation to the register?
Basically, the register's here. The locking cooler's on the wall.
Is it inside of whoever's working there?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's right basically on a wall like this. So it is in sight. There's nothing blocking it. It's right on the side of where they are.
And are all of your employees who are, when they're alone, at least 18 years old?
Yes.
And do you know if any of them have ever sold alcohol or have an understanding of TIPS certification?
That I do not know. They have worked for me for -- a couple of them have been there for a while, but I don't know if they have knowledge of that or not. And the TIPS certified, is it a course that they have to -- for example, in order to become cashiers, they got to be C-operators at a gas station. They go through a stage C operator testing, and also they got to be certified in the material safety data book. So it's basically training, just like if we had a food establishment, they got to be certified. So if they do need certification, I mean, they can all get certified. That's not a big deal. Along with myself as well.
Mr. Berthew.
You know, based on what we just went through with the other folks on Route 12 and 20, I think that as long as we make a contingent that, you know, they don't serve unless the person is TIPS certified, I don't know if we can just proceed and put that as a contingency that they can't until they prove that they're TIPS certified, or do we put it to the next meeting?
I think that's probably the better thing to do because of the questions we have here about, you know, how you're going to handle your employees and their TIPS certification, their training. Instead of denying a license, you'd be better off to postpone this hearing until such time you come back and let us know that your employees have had the training and their certification is in place. Then you can bring it back to us, and then we'll be able to, you know, continue.
Okay. Typically, what's the process behind that?
It's my understanding that the certifications are readily available. I mean, you can probably get somebody in in the next week or two and probably get on the agenda for the next meeting, right?
But you can also do it online.
Yeah.
From what I understand, just --
And you can do it online.
Yeah, you can probably do it online.
Okay. That's fine.
So, yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
It's not so much that I'm opposed to giving you a license to sell beer and wine at the location. You know, it certainly will, you know, increase your business. It's, as Mr. Berthew said, we had a recent applicant in who we requested we continue the hearing because they had no knowledge of TIPS certification and had no experience with selling alcohol. We take the sale of alcohol to minors very seriously, as the Board of Selectmen does. The chief, I know I just saw him here, the chief is here. I'm sure he can attest to the fact that, you know, we do conduct alcohol compliance tests, and if you're found in violation, especially being a new license holder, you could have your license suspended. We just want to be sure that you understand the importance of not selling alcohol to underage people, and that you have all the tools that you need, which comes with this TIPS certification, to ensure that you don't do that.
Yeah, understood.
So I would make a motion to continue the hearing until our next meeting on
October 24th.
October 24th.
Okay.
Second. Okay. So the motion been made and seconded to hold this until October 24th. Is there any further questions or comments? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And you can call the office tomorrow if you have any additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next thing we have on the agenda, at 7:10, okay, is Route 20 Auto Sales Motor Vehicle Class II license at 518 Washington Street. We have an application in front of us. I just received a letter here from the owner of the property. "I hereby ask that you delay all further meetings in regards to the property I own located at 518 Washington Street, Auburn. You are personally notified by me that all issues have been resolved." Uh-oh, "until you are personally notified by me that all issues have been resolved. Kevin Yarba, who has previously leased the premises from me, has yet to sign all the business agreements and other required documentation to continue to run the used car lot on my premises. At this time, I do not want the license of Rockdale Auto and Truck to be changed or modified in any way until such time that all documents are agreed upon and a new agreement is signed between myself and Kevin Yarba of Route 20 Auto Sales Incorporated." Signed by Ronald LaRusso, and it was verified by Shannon Reagan through the Town of Auburn's Selectmen.
So procedurally, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the hearing so we can continue it.
Second. Okay. Motion made and seconded. Open the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. You have just heard that the owner of the property wishes to delay all further meetings. What is the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing to the next meeting.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, please.
Hi, good evening. Mike and Michelle Schullinger, we're the Soul of Butters. We got a registered letter that this item would be on the agenda tonight. We're going on vacation in a couple of weeks, or for a couple of weeks, starting the end of this week. So that might weigh into our availability to have a say at the licensing hearing.
Okay. Right now, what we've done is we've taken a vote to postpone this hearing until our next meeting on October 24th. We'll wait and find out if there's anything. Come back. In the letter, it says here, it says, "Further delay all meetings to the property until such time that the owner notifies us of what's going on." So--
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to amend my motion to move it out to the four weeks--
We won't be back until the 29th, so if it could be after that, that would be great.
I don't have a calendar in front of me, but whatever our next meeting is--
My recommendation would be that you postpone it indefinitely anyway, because it appears that it may not even be going forward. So postpone it indefinitely, but not to be held prior to the middle of November.
I'll amend my motion to read, postpone the meeting indefinitely and request that this Soul of Butters be notified if and when the meeting is rescheduled.
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Okay.
Continue.
After the chair, we're just going to clarify that that was continued. It was open and continued, not postponed.
Thank you. Okay. The chief is here, so I'd like to--
We have to mark this as a final. Yep. And I need to skip item--
Six.
Sixth.
All right. What should we do? Should we do--
Board of Selectmen general items.
Yeah. You want to move that up?
Is there someone here from National Grid?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we expect a presentation to be?
Will it be a long presentation?
Ten minutes.
Okay. All right.
We have hearings. We have Sheldon's here.
The licenses?
Is this going to be a quick approach?
Five A, I mean, go to five A and go--
Five C.
Because that should be fairly quick, right?
Okay. Why don't we, can we move up item five A and five C?
So moved.
Second. Sorry. Sleeping. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. The first one is going to be for Quality Beverage Motorsports International, One Day Beer and Wine License at 444 Washington Street. There's somebody here from there. Would you come up and identify yourselves, please?
Jeremy Wentworth with Motorsports International.
Jessica Wentworth with Motorsports International.
Craig Colonero with Quality Beverage.
And what is your plans for that day, December 3rd, from 1:00 in the afternoon until 4:00?
We have a program going on with some of our local off-premise package store retailers that are in the central mass area that we service as a distributor. We've partnered with a local radio station and Motorsports International, where we'll be giving away a Polaris Ace. It's a four-wheeler. This is a text-to-win program. No purchase necessary, so it's compliant with local laws. They must be 21 to enter. Before this date that we are applying for the one-day license, we'll notify finalists to attend the event. They will hopefully then show up to the event, where then we will verify their legal drinking age. Then, once we've verified that, they'll get a gift pack of goodies. They'll be able to tour their facility. There will be Bud &amp; Bud Light available for sale. The people that would be serving it would be some of our employees from Quality Beverage that are TIPS certified, that would be assisting our friends here at Motorsports. And over that three-hour event, there'll be games set up, there'll be the radio station doing a live broadcast, and all these finalists will be given a key along with their gift bag. And as the event progresses, these finalists will come up. If their key starts this vehicle, they're the winner, and then the event will conclude. But they'll also, upon verification of their age, they'll all be given a wristband, which we do at any type of sampling event that we do. That way, once they get up to the respective counter to order a beer, that will be on. But there should be very little consumption. It's more of an interactive, see-there facility, and hopefully someone walks away pretty happy that day.
Okay. Just by the looks of the sketch you've given us here, is it all going to be inside, or is it going to be also in the parking lot?
It's going to be inside.
It's going to be all inside?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have you got any plans for any other entertainment there? I mean, besides that, it's just going to be--
At most, it would maybe be a DJ or something, playing some music, but not a live band and stuff, yeah.
The radio station, it's kind of a three-party program. They're there to support this program that we're doing with radio, ads that are currently running to support the program, but they'll be there with their street team doing a live broadcast, but that will all be set up inside as well.
Okay. Excuse me. Anybody else? Mrs. Goodrich.
So it sounds like a fun event, first of all. Do you have an idea of how many people you expect? Is it like, you know, is it 40, or is it 100, or 200, or you don't know?
Right. We don't know at this point. We're trying to gauge it. Right now, I mean, being off-season for us, we're estimating probably 300 to 400. We do have three crowd manager certificates already completed, with a fourth one that will be underway next week. So with each of those being good, up to 250 people.
They are certified.
Our plan is to have 100 finalists that are invited, and they'll be allowed to bring a guest. Now, the chances of all of them showing up most likely won't happen. I'm sure that some friends of the Motorsports, they're regular customers, will be there. They won't be eligible to win the event, or the vehicle, rather. Then there'll be our employees of Quality Beverage also there assisting. But I would say, my best guesstimate of events, we've done like this in the past, I'd say 200 to 300 people throughout the whole time coming and going.
Okay. Anybody got anything else? Mrs. Goodrich.
I just want to ask if you're familiar with the recommendations that the DCG has put. I know you met with them, and there's--
Yes, we did.
Some recommendations that they've--
Barking on that side of Route 20.
Yeah, and why don't I just read them, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, into the record? So these are the recommendations that we generally adopt when we approve a license. The applicant shall obtain all necessary permits and inspections from town departments, boards, or commissions, most notably the Board of Health for the proposed food truck and solid waste management. The applicant shall confirm the presence of a certified crowd manager with the Auburn Fire Department prior to the event.
Which we just received.
Which we received. So just please provide them to the chief. The applicant shall ensure that emergency vehicle access is maintained. The applicant shall contact the chief of police to hire necessary police details in advance. The applicant is responsible to ensure that overflow parking is not made available on the opposite side of Route 20. The hours for serving alcohol are recommended to be from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. You understand those conditions?
Has anybody got anything else?
I don't know if there's any public comment before I make that.
Has anybody got any from the neighbors? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions recommended by DCG to be placed upon the license.
Second. Motion been made and seconded to approve the license. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Good luck. Good night.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next we're going to have is five C. It's for Sheldon's Outdoor Entertainment License at 914 Southbridge Street. Is there anybody here from Sheldon's? Could you identify yourself for us, please?
I'm Chris. I'm the marketing manager from Sheldon's Harley-Davidson.
I guess there's been some questions on, we've had a policy change, and have wanted to know if that policy has been gone over with you, and you understand exactly what goes on with that new policy.
Yeah. I met with Shannon, and she kind of stepped us through it.
Okay. I guess I'll ask the town administration, have you got all the paperwork?
Through the chair. As of this afternoon, we did not have the certificate of liability.
I brought that with me. We just got that.
Okay. And I do want to bring to the board's attention that a call came into our office this afternoon at 2:00 from a resident who was concerned that they just received the notification today about what was going, about the entertainment license. Per your new policy, there's a requirement to notify Butters. We had recommended a 10-day notification period, eight at the very least, but it appears that at least that one resident did not get her notification until today.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience from that neighborhood that received or did not receive? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may at this time, we're speaking of the Butters. I got a call today from an Butter who also received his notification today. I actually spoke to two neighbors. One asked me not to use their name on the record, but one did ask me to use his name on the record, that he just received his notification today, and it asked me to express his concerns, which, when we get to that part of it, I will, but his name is William Timothy Crowe. It's on Hill Street. And he just, today, also received his notice.
And through the chair, I should just point out, on your new policy, it did say the applicant, a Butter shall be notified by the applicant. The policy doesn't specify the days. We have been saying 10 days, because that is generally what the notice is on--
It gives people a chance to respond. Okay. Yes, Mr. Berthew.
Am I reading this wrong, that the event is October 22nd?
Yes, October 22nd.
I'm confused as to what the concern is if they received it 11 or 12 days when we said we recommend 10.
It's the Butters to attend tonight's meeting. They were just notified.
Oh, to the meeting.
They were just notified today at 2:00 p.m.
I see.
When they got their mail.
Thank you.
I know that in the past, there's been some concerns over, you know, extended time where the re-event is closed, but there are several people that do remain, you know, on-site, and there was a little bit more activity there that doesn't go along with what the outdoor entertainment license goes along with. So I guess, my concern is that the Butters hadn't been notified properly, and doesn't give everybody a chance to get here to speak. And there's a new policy in place, and we have to adhere to the new policy.
Yeah, we just, we just became aware of it. I believe it was the third that Shannon gave me the thing that actually sent to them. So we sent it out literally the next day. But there wasn't, she told us, most of the time, it should be 10 days, but at that time, we didn't have an adequate number of days to actually get it out that early.
Okay. Well, still, we have to follow the policy along, and if the Butters haven't been notified properly, then they should have that ability to come and to speak on an entertainment.
Oh, I understand that, but I thought that in the policy, it doesn't even have the number of days, though.
No, it doesn't, but you still have to give, you know, just realistically, give people the opportunity to be able to schedule something and be notified a little bit more than just one day in advance. And I guess the other, the notifications were received when? Today?
The resident I spoke with was today.
The complaint that we got in, it was this afternoon, from the resident who said she would have liked to attend the meeting, but didn't find out about it until today.
Okay. Well, I guess--
So you are correct that the policy doesn't specify how many days, but as I said, we recommended, as you know, 10. We understood that you couldn't do 10, because the board had just passed the policy, so by the time they sat down and talked about it, it was eight days. But I'm not so sure for, why people are just getting their notice today if it went out on the 4th. You said the 4th?
Yeah. Some of them, I mean, I have some of the addresses, and some of them are actually in, like, Alaska and Dudley and stuff like that, so I don't know if they're actually Butters that physically live there, or if it was a business or--
The two people I spoke with on Hill Street.
I don't know if we are or not, we can.
I know that would give still one of the sisters.
My only concern is that we haven't had Butters here, and just by the letter here, and just by the comments by Mrs. Goodrich, we hadn't planned on having a meeting prior to town meeting on October 18th. If we could do that, then we'd give the Butters a chance to receive their mail, and then we can put it on the agenda for the October 18th meeting, just prior to town meeting.
I'm trying to think through the chair, because I just suggested if you did that, today is Tuesday, even if those letters went in the mail Wednesday, they'd probably receive them.
We could, he could, we could--
Contact.
Contact them by telephone and tell them that the meeting was continued.
Yeah. I think that would work.
Okay. And that's what we'll do, and we'll--
Mr. Chairman, if you would indulge me, just for any residents who may be listening, I don't want to get into a big thing, but I'm not even understanding the brief description of the proposed event. If you could just tell us a little bit about that, and then we'll have an idea of what we're looking at when we meet at our next meeting.
It was basically just some professional riders that do exhibitions on--
Sit here at the counter for us, please. There must be some feedback over there on that microphone.
It's a bunch of professional riders just showing some exhibitions with Harley-Davidson motorcycles. So it was just basically to show some tricks and stuff in the front parking lot of our dealership, to kind of entice people to buy those motorcycles.
Okay. All right. Mr. Berthew.
I actually, something that we had discussed before with one of your other events, and actually, I think it was a lady that was selling hot dogs out of her trailer or whatever. We had specified, because my concern is that the way the trailer is set up, anybody that's in line to get food from that trailer is going directly out toward the entrance and exit of your facility. We had said the trailer needed to go the other way, so that they were around the other side of the trailer, so that they could be out of the direct traffic area. And so, you know, thankfully, there's been no incident, but I'd like to see that trailer get moved, to get flipped around the other way, so that the window of the trailer is facing toward, like, periwinkles. You know, keep the people off, away from the entrance to that facility.
She's actually going to have to, we're going to actually have to move it because of this event for that day, anyway.
Okay.
It's going to kind of take up that spot.
So that, in the future, and maybe that was a discussion for her as well, but I just figured while you're here, I did notice going by there a couple of times that the trailer wasn't set up the way that we had asked for it to be set up, so. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else?
I just want to confirm that the output, you know, someone will be available to answer any questions at our meeting that we're continuing at, too.
Yeah, so it'll be on October 18th. Yeah, so it'll be on October 18th, that's next Tuesday, and that'll be at the high school in the presentation room. That's where we usually meet and we'll meet, I don't know, we haven't got a time set for the meeting yet. Yeah, we can do it for 6:30.
6:15 in case there, I think there's going to be some issues that need to be addressed. I'm not saying you're not going to get lost, I'm just saying there are some issues that need to be addressed.
Okay.
So we'll make it at 6:15 at the Auburn High School Presentation Room.
And through the chair, if I may ask that.
Yes, please.
The company or of course work with our office to notify the abutters that it's been postponed. How many abutters were on that list? Do you recall?
I want to say there's 15 or 20 of them, but some of them are in Alaska and stuff. The addresses are to Walmart Corporate and stuff.
Okay. All right, then what we'll do is we'll postpone this until our next meeting.
Continue.
We'll continue until it's been on October 18th.
Continue and through the chair, and we have to get notice, we're going to have to put it out via mail for those who are not, we'll have to put it in the mail and for those who are local that we have numbers for, we can work with the applicant to call them and let them know. Because otherwise, they won't go in the mail until tomorrow.
Okay.
And hopefully they get them in two days.
All right.
So any abutters who may be watching this tonight, the application for the outdoor entertainment license for Sheldon Harley-Davidson on Saturday, October 22nd, is being continued to Tuesday, October 18th at 6:15, did we say?
Yes.
6:15 at the presentation room at the high school. And if any abutters want to speak at that time, we would be happy to hear them.
Okay. So is there a motion?
Motion to continue the application to October 18th.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All of them?
Does the abutters be notified?
Okay, just to the abutters be notified, okay, thank you. Anything else?
All those in favor? Those are providing, or are we going to have to call them?
Call our office. Call our office in the morning and talk to Shannon. We'll work with you to get it done. We're happy to help.
All right.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, because I know we have a police chief and a fire chief here, this should be a quick item on the law articles.
Okay.
We'll move that up.
Okay, we got to move up item 5D.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Vote recommendations on the October 18th, 2016 special town meeting, law articles 19 and 20. Votes to be taken to recommend approval, not recommend approval, defer to the petitioner, or to take no position.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
I know that you guys had some questions with respect to those two articles. The long and short of it is when we went to town meeting before, we had submitted the language to the attorney general's office, which they approved. And the way the process works is we had to gain approval from the attorney general's office and then go to town meeting, then submit that language that was approved to the FBI. The problem that we ran into is once we submitted it to the FBI, they kicked it back. They said that even though the attorney general had approved it, they didn't. So we've gone forward now and we've made modifications that should satisfy their concerns. So now we're kind of back to square one where we have to go back to town meeting, get approval for the amendment, then go back to the attorney general's office and then to the FBI. We've been working with Attorney Henigan and this should hopefully clarify the issue that they raised.
Okay, now, who raised the issue originally?
The FBI.
The FBI did, okay. I know that I had questioned it one time before on the Cory checks and for the alcohol licenses, I think the other licenses, there's, you know, they have a lot of people coming and going, but with the alcohol license, they're pretty much an established business. And my question to you was, is it going to be the owner of the license, the license holder, or is it going to be all the employees?
It would be just the name of the person who is listed on the license itself.
So it would not be everybody?
No, it would not.
All right, this is the first time, how would that be done? That would be through a renewal process?
Yes.
Through a renewal application or with a renewal?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we taking one at a time or?
Yeah, well, actually, we can if you like, or you can ask your questions, whatever, because it's, we're handling articles 19 and 20.
Okay, I just have a question on the Cory side of things and I had read that Cory needs to be redone every six months. And is that something that is a recommendation or is that something that it actually has to happen?
Yeah, that doesn't actually have to happen. It's, you know, it's going to be within the realm of reasonableness. You know, like with the liquor license, you know, that would be like upon the yearly renewal. Or if they transfer the liquor license, which happens from time to time from one individual to another, they would have to resubmit once that happened.
And does this apply to coaches and anything to do with the school system Cory checks or?
No, that's separate.
That's totally separate, okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Anything else? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend article 19 and article 20.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Chief, have you got anything else?
No, I do not.
Okay. Okay, motion been made and seconded to for 19 and 20 to recommend approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to move a request and I'm not waiting, but we all saw the fires.
Okay. Can we move up item? 6A.
So move.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Vote to authorize application and accept grant funds for assistance to the firefighters grant for replacement of the training facility and it's request from the fire chief. And we have the fire chief in house tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, before I run out, through the chair, if I may, because this is under town manager items, I should mention this, as you know, we come to the board when we are applying for a grant and this grant became available, oftentimes we're not complaining because we love the opportunity to go for grants, but we don't get a lot of notice on putting them together. So we did find out that this grant was coming up. We wanted to bring it to you in the interim. The fire chief and his able employees who have been working on the grant have been putting it together. So today in your package, you should have additional information that wasn't available on Friday because they worked on it all through the weekend to get it to the point where it is. So given that, I'd like to turn it over to the fire chief to just explain what the grant is, what we're looking to do, and what the process is.
Please. Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Good evening. So as outlined in the, does everybody have the document that I emailed today?
We do, thank you.
And again, I do apologize, this information, as the manager said, was not available on Friday when the grant was put together. The grant team met Friday morning, came up with the total, and actually just within the last couple hours, this grant total changed again into a reduction of $10,000. So the grant request that I'll be seeking approval for this evening will be a total of $530,000, not $540,000. So this grant is a FEMA grant. It's called the AFG, the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. We do apply for this grant annually. This is the same grant that several years ago, we received our new self-contained breathing apparatus on. And this is the same grant that we did seek approval to replace the ambulance stretchers. Unfortunately, we were not successful in that grant. We were notified on that over the summer. So again, I am asking the board for permission. The grant application period opened today. It closes middle of November. We have just about 30 days to get the grant written and submitted, but the application period did open today. And again, we are seeking a total of $530,000 to replace the existing training facility on West Street. The grant does only cover the purchase and the assembly of the facility. It does not cover any of the site work, which would include demolition of the existing facility. But as you are aware, we do have $125,000 set aside from the Norma Card Trust that I did commit to the training facility project at some point. So not only would the matching grant funds, if we were awarded, come from the Card Trust, but the money for the demolition and site work would come from that trust as well. So that is what I am seeking this evening, is to apply for and accept the funds if awarded.
Okay, just as a follow-up question that we had spoke, the grant that Ms. Norma Card generously gave the town, how would we maintain the property afterwards? We have a brand new, we'll have a brand new structure, but how do we maintain it? Where would that money come from?
Sure. The existing training facility that we have was constructed in 1999, so the facility's just about 17 years old now. And the maintenance of that facility comes from user fees from other communities that use it. Oftentimes throughout the course of the year, we're requested by other municipalities to use the facility for training. We do charge a fee for that. We have a couple of departments that actually pay us an annual subscription fee because they do use it often enough that it's worth it for them just to pay us the subscription fee versus, you know, every time they utilize it. So since the facility was constructed in 1999, 100% of the maintenance and the upkeep of that building has come from user fees from other municipalities paying for its use.
Thank you. Mr. Bertheum.
Does the existing building have any value with other smaller towns? Can it be disassembled and assembled somewhere else or is it pretty much at its, taking its course?
Yeah, the building, you know, as I'm sure you were aware, both of you spent some time, you know, the plan was always to replace the facility at the 20-year mark. It is a steel building, the structure is steel, it's wrapped with aluminum siding. When you go into the facility and look, you know, the seal, I mean, it is heavy duty steel, but it is taking some wear and tear. There's a lot of rust, there's a lot of scaling, you know, on the, on the structure. So I don't think that the steel itself would be reusable. There is certainly scrap value and I think that the scrap value that we have on it will actually assist in bringing the cost of the demolition down because we could write the RFP that says whoever takes it down could reclaim the, you know, the material. So I think that's going to help, you know, bring the cost down considerably to actually remove the building. But I don't think that you would find a contractor or a structural engineer that would allow 20-year-old steel to be taken down and then erected on another site. I'd be more than happy to give anybody a tour, but when you walk into the building, you know, again, you've got to think about what we do in there. There's a lot of water flowing in the property. The steel and the metal has certainly taken a toll from a rusting and a scaling perspective. Most of the metal has very large holes in it. So I think the only value is going to be reclaiming.
Also, from the heat, there will change the structure and materials too, so.
Yeah, there are several areas within the building where the metals and the heat, it's, you know, the structure itself's actually warped.
Right. Okay, Mrs. Goodrich.
So would the life expectancy of this new building be 15 to 20 years?
Yeah, we would think, actually, this facility here has a 30-year, you know, manufacturer warranty, so we would anticipate the life on this building would be 30 years. It's different technology, you know, as again, over time, technology changes, things change. So the way that the facility is actually constructed, it's constructed in a way where it really, it takes the heat and the burning into consideration where there's not a lot of direct flame impingement in the building, which the facility we have today, there's a lot of direct flame impingement in the building. This is designed in a way where it's not, and so there is a 30-year life expectancy of this building.
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, with that said, I think it's a wonderful use of the Norma Card Trust Fund. I'm sure she would, she would give us her approval to, to support this and build this structure and, you know, have it, have it around for close to 30 years, so.
Yeah, she was, she was a lovely lady and the reason that I directed her money towards training is because every time we would pick her up, she would always make a reference as to how well-trained we were. And that was the reason why I directed her money towards training because it was something that she often commented on.
And it was a special donation that she left to the fire department. I just wanted to be sure that we recognized her when we're doing this, so thank you.
Okay. What's the wish and order?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the application, accept the grant funds for assistance to firefighters' grant for replacement of the training facility.
Second.
Any further questions, comments? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Let us know how you do.
Absolutely. Have a great evening. Take care.
You too. I don't know.
Do you know what Mr. Stomach is here for?
Yes, well, we have item 5B. It's an easement, so if you want to take that.
Is it a quick one?
Oh, yeah. It's a quick.
Okay.
And I can explain it if you want.
Item 5B?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to move up item 5B.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 5B, vote to authorize and sign the consent form for the easement in the open space easement Whitman Bailey Drive.
Through the chair and if I can explain while the gentleman comes up, I'm happy to. We received a call and we spoke recently that at the Windmill Estates subdivision, there is a need to put a National Grid pole.
Right.
And it turns out that where they need to place the pole is in an area where the planning board had recommended be left for open space purposes surrounding subdivision. So it was our recommendation back to the developer that the planning board take this up and make a recommendation to you as to whether to allow that to happen or not because they were the ones that had initially approved of the open space easement. So this evening, simultaneous to this being on the agenda, it was on the planning board agenda. So Matt Benoit, town planner, came in and handed us this. They put it first on their agenda, so you would have it by the time you got to this item.
Okay.
And if you want to read it into the record, they did recommend to you to give this great easement, but.
Okay. And it's stated October 11th and it's utility pole placement, Windmill Estates subdivision. At its meeting on Tuesday, October 11th, 2016, the Auburn Planning Board voted in favor to recommend Board of Slackman approval for utility pole placement on an open space land abutting the entrance to Whitman Bailey Drive for the purpose of providing electricity to the new Windmill Estates subdivision. And for those who are not familiar with Windmill Estates, it's on Prospect Hill, at the top of the hill on the, at the sharp turn and it'll probably be on the right-hand side.
Before the turn, correct?
Yes, before turn on the right-hand side. And so this is, the planning board has approved this and now it has come to us.
Through the chair, if I may, we have a copy of the grant of easement to be signed by the board.
Okay.
And obviously understanding there were three members here, but this is a requirement from Mass Electric that the board signs and not myself.
Okay.
So if you vote this evening, it would be to sign the consent to easement from National Grid.
Okay.
Is there anyone here?
Is there, yeah, are there any abutters here? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to authorize and sign the consent form for the easement in the open space easement Whitman Bailey Drive.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll sign this right here and I'll pass it along.
Do you need us to make a copy and then get the original to you? All right, I'm sorry, so we'll get it in your hands.
Pick it up on that.
That's great. I'll call the office first and save your trip, make sure it's done before you come in.
Okay, after we've signed that, then we'll get back to the original agenda and...
So I believe we're all set with Mr. Stomach?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, well said. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll come back to our original item 3C, presentation by National Grid. We apologize for the delay. Welcome.
Hi there.
Would you, yeah, please identify yourself, thank you.
My name is Brenda Pike. I work on residential energy efficiency programs at National Grid and I'm going to give you a quick overview of our energy efficiency programs and then we'll dive in a little bit into what the community initiative is and the benefits to Auburn. into what the community initiative is and the benefits to Auburn. So just a quick, National Grid is the largest electric and gas utility in Massachusetts. There's an image of our service territory there. I know that we are the electric utility for Auburn, and you have Columbia Gas, so if you are chosen for this initiative, we will be in contact with Columbia Gas just to make sure that they are on board with, with your participation, because any outreach that we're doing to the community will also affect their energy efficiency programs as well. And I just want to say National Grid is very proud of our energy efficiency programs. We were just, Massachusetts was just rated number one for the sixth year in a row by the American Council for an Energy Efficient Economy, and utility energy efficiency programs are a large part of that. We regularly get either perfect or near-perfect scores, so very proud of that. And the energy efficiency programs are paid for by a charge on each customer's electric bill based on their usage, and it is a relatively small portion of the bill. Renewables, energy efficiency, things like that, make up about seven and a half percent of a typical bill. But I do like to point out to customers that they are paying into the fund, they might as well be taking advantage of it. And we market our programs under the MassSave brand. All the investor-owned utilities in the state do that, and we try to keep our programs as consistent as possible so that customers aren't confused about, you know, having something offered to a customer in one town that is not offered to, to another in another utility territory. And we also have a website, masssave.com, where you can find out more information about the programs, and there's an online home assessment there that I like to direct people to first, so they can enter in some information about their home and get some specific recommendations right there that are really easy, and they can see some financial and energy benefits if they were to take advantage of our programs. So we have a slew of energy efficiency programs here, from our direct-install programs to in-store discounts or rebates, to home energy reports that customers receive in the mail comparing their energy use to their neighbors. The thing that is most relevant to this program is the Home Energy Services Program. That's what most people think of when they think of MassSave. That's when you have someone come into your home and do an assessment, and that's specifically for one-to-four unit homes. We have other programs out there for multifamily homes, for low-income, single and multifamily, for new construction, things like that. But this community initiative is focusing specifically on what we're offering through the Home Energy Services Program. So we do have something for everyone. So when the energy specialist does come into your home to do a home energy assessment, they will install what we call instant savings measures. So these are the LED light bulbs, the smart power strips, faucet aerators, showerheads, thermostats, and those are all no cost, and they can start saving people money immediately. We also have, we also make recommendations for insulation and air sealing. Air sealing is no cost. Insulation, we pay for 75% of that, up to $2,000. And then we'll also let you know about rebates for things that are applicable to you. So for instance, it might be a heating system or a water heater that is, that's old, or refrigerator, or something like that. And we'll also let you know about the 0% interest heat loan that you can use to pay for some of that. And there are two different paths that customers can participate in this program. If they call our main number, 866-527-SAVE, they will be put in touch with our lead vendor, who will do the home energy assessment, and then they will assign it to an independent installation contractor to do the weatherization work. If they prefer to work with a home performance contractor of their choice, there is a list of them on masssave.com that they can choose one from, and then that contractor will do both the assessment and any follow-up work. So it's really just a preference. Some customers prefer having a neutral third party doing the assessment to begin with, and some customers prefer working with the same contractor all the way through the process. And then after the installation, the weatherization work is done, our lead vendor will inspect about 60% of that work, and then we also have another vendor that will inspect 5% of that. So we're really serious about quality control, and we will go, we will have the contractors go back into a customer's home to fix any, any issues that we find. So the community initiative is something that we developed because we are doing a lot of statewide marketing, but we're, we weren't doing a lot of sort of on-the-ground work, and we realized that we don't know residents as well as you do in your own town. So you know the groups to talk to, you know, you know, the events that people are going to, things like that. So that's what this is for. So we set goals for different measures, the home energy assessments, heating systems, things like that, based on past year's participation. And then we assign marketing dollars to each of those goals based on what we have spent in the past per participant. And then we work with you to help you do some outreach in the town. And there, the, the award is laid out at three points during the year, so there is some startup funding for any materials that you want to, for instance, print out at the beginning. And then, once you reach the level-one goal, there will be the, the funding for that, and then the, the level-two goal, two goals at the end. And also, we, we put together a training session for anyone in the town who will be participating in the, getting residents involved, so you know more about our programs and can answer residents' questions. And then we have monthly check-ins so that all the towns who are participating can get together, share what they're doing. If there are new, you know, interesting types of outreach that they're doing, they'll share it, and often others, others will do it as well. You'll find out about your progress towards your goals, and in general, it's just a really good check-in. So these are the goals for Auburn. I believe that my colleague Delana Diaz has given this to your, your energy committee at this point, but you can see that the different measures that are laid out, air sealing assessments, air sealing, insulation, heating systems, refrigerator, freezer recycling, and Wi-Fi thermostats. And the baseline that we've set is for 2015, and the level-one goal is matching 2015's participation, and then the level-two goal is 50% higher than that. And here's an example of our monthly reporting. One of the benefits that a lot of towns really enjoy from this program is the, the data aspect of it. There aren't a lot of ways that you can get this, close-to-real-time data on the energy efficiency participation in your town. And also, if you need aggregate energy usage, for instance, if you're doing some, an energy plan or something like that, then we can also help you out with that. We can't give you individual customer data, obviously, but we can help you on the aggregate. And we also, we don't just send you out to do these things, we also help you out with a lot of support. So we will print out brochures, flyers, tear sheets, things like that, that we designed for the program. We will also, we will offer bill inserts and emails to our customers on your behalf. We can provide some event, event support. We have a vendor that does light bulb sales, for instance, that people tend to draw people in at events. We have a cute little dollhouse that people can, can look at to see the different examples of, of energy efficiency measures that they can do. We have a bicycle that can, they can use to light up some light bulbs. So just some, some eye-catching things that you can have at events to draw people in. We also do a school fundraiser with light bulbs, and we do some teacher training. And there's always more other things that come up during the year. Anytime there is something new that's added to a program, we let the communities and the community initiative know first, and then let them kind of get the word out and as sort of a soft launch for it. So it's a really good way to have regular contact with us and just be able to, to share these new things and, and do more outreach and collaboration. So the timeframe for this is November 1st is the deadline for the application. We will do the, the training on the program in early December, and then the program will actually start January 15th. And if you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them now, or you can contact me or my colleague Delana Diaz.
Well, I guess that's one of the things I want to be sure of, that if, you know, there are questions by the public, how can they get ahold of you? I have a telephone number here and also your email address, your website address. The 866-527-SAVE, which is 866-527-7283, or you have masssave.com. So the public can go to either one of those and call and ask questions?
They can ask questions about our programs, our energy efficiency programs in general. If they have questions specifically about the community initiative and about the town adopting it, they're, you're welcome to have them contact either myself or Delana Diaz. We have our contact information at the end of this presentation.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
So through the chairman to the town managers, so what, what, what do envision the application process be if we were to support this, like what?
Through the chair, that's, that was one of the questions I had, actually, also. So at this point, so the Board of Selectmen needs to take a vote to adopt the community initiative program prior to the application being submitted in November, November 1st. So one of the reasons we wanted to bring this to the board tonight is I thought you should present it to them, they could see, and then come back and vote at a later meeting, at the October 26th meeting, or, excuse me, 24th meeting, to give them time to absorb the material. But we do need a vote of the board, is that correct?
I mean, it's not required on our end for you to apply. We do request, you know, a letter of support from the, the town administrator or, or mayor, depending on the structure of your town.
Okay. So this would be something internally, then, we, you know, we could talk about and come back at the next meeting and put it on as a vote, because I would prefer personally to have a vote of the board to proceed with this, because I think it's something that it should be all of us seeking to do this. The application itself, I guess I just have a couple of questions. So we would be applying for the maximum amount of $40,000, or is that something that's automatic that you go in when you apply for?
So it would be for the amount, could you actually go back to that? Yes, it would be for this $32,059.
Okay, sorry, that one sheet wasn't in my packet.
Oh, that, that was a previous presentation I had done, yeah.
So through the chair, if I can ask, we would be applying for, for that amount. The town's responsibility would be to work with you for the promotion of this program, getting the information out to the residents through a number of different mechanisms that you identified in here. And are there any penalties, per se, if any of these goals are not met? What would?
They, they, there is no penalty. It would just be you, if you do not reach that goal, then you wouldn't receive the funding that is associated with it. Yep.
So the funding is based on the individual goals that you have there. Sorry, I can't see them all from here. And I know there are funding dollar amounts attached to each of them, so that's why we would be promoting our residents to participate in this, because not only would the town be benefiting by getting grant dollars for this, but the residents are benefiting by making savings on their electricity.
Exactly. And we do ask that the town use the funding for an, an energy project. We, we, you know, allow you however you want to use it, but we, we do request that you use it for an energy project. Most towns have used it for energy efficiency projects in municipal buildings. I know some have used them for solar panels or LED streetlights. One used it for, to, to continue the outreach to residents the following year.
And I guess one of my other questions is, we, as you probably know, we are a participant in municipal aggregation. So we're going into our second year now on, on that program, starting in December. So just to be clear, so anyone who is on the town's municipal aggregation, this program is still available to them?
Absolutely.
Because that question does come up. It, it's a separate issue. The municipal aggregation is the ability to go out and get the, the electricity at a better rate, but understanding that National Grid is still available to the customers through the distribution side.
National Grid doesn't supply the electricity. We, we do the trans, the distribution to your homes, but National Grid doesn't care, you know, what supplier you're getting the electricity from. You're still, the, the energy efficiency funds on your bill are, are going to National Grid to do these programs.
So I just want to clarify that, because a lot of people, you know, the municipal aggregation program is new to us, and we may get calls from residents if we decide to proceed. So my last question is, what other communities in Massachusetts have participated in this, or just in general, how many communities are, are doing this or considering it?
So this year, we're working with seven communities. Last year, there were five, and the year before that was the, the first year we were piloting it, and we only had one.
Okay.
There's been a lot of interest this year. There, I think there have been thirty towns that have expressed interest so far. Obviously, we haven't received any applications yet.
Okay, and through the chair, to answer your question, Mrs. Goodrich, the, what we would envision, I've spoken to Eric Lesfrance about this, and he is our energy manager, and he would be the point person on this, to be working on the outreach. It's part of what he needs to be doing anyway as an energy manager, and part of what he does. You know, he has goals to make sure that not only are we trying to save and institute energy efficiency measures here as a municipality, but making sure that we give information to the residents to help them save on their electrical, electrical costs. So if this program is beneficial to the residents, then it would be something that it fits within the scope of what he would be doing anyway.
And I know there's a member of the energy committee here tonight that can speak to their discussions about it.
Thank you.
I'm Waring Daly. I chair the energy committee in town, and Ms. Pike came out and presented to us in August, I believe it was, and the committee voted unanimously to support this program as well. We all felt that it would be great to have the energy committee support Eric in his effort, and so everybody on the committee is interested in, in really getting involved in it and doing the training and enabling it for 2017.
Thank you, and I, I want to thank the energy committee, because they've done just a great job looking at all different issues and taking on some, some really interesting initiatives, and this is absolutely one that was brought to us from them, and they're interested in it. So that's why we thought to bring it from the energy committee to the board, give you a couple of weeks to just look at it, and maybe, I mean, if you're ready to take a vote tonight, that's fine. We didn't want to have you feel that you didn't have enough information to take that vote. Tonight would be fine if you wanted to vote to support the town's application, that would be fine. You don't really need to vote to authorize it, but to support it. If you want to wait until your meeting next week, on the 18th, we could do that, or on the 24th. We just want to make sure we know enough and enough advance notice, we can start getting the application ready.
Mr. Berthew, good question.
Actually, it was mostly answered. I was looking to see what personnel were going to be utilized and, you know, whether we had time, you know, the kind of time to, to do mailings and trainings and all kinds of things. So you answered most of that for me. I think I would like to go to the next meeting to take a vote so that, you know, we can hear comments from the public as we're out and about, and, and also think about it a little bit more before we actually, you know, make the vote.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. So again, my, my question comes back to the application process. If we hold this till, to our next meeting, you know, I'm not, I'm not, you know, still understanding how involved the application process is, and if that gives you enough time for a November 1 deadline. We're at October 11th right now, we're at our next meeting, unless we do. Top meeting is about the 18th. We couldn't discuss it at that meeting. I just want to be sure that we're not putting anyone under the gun to do a, you know, comprehensive application and.
Miss the deadline.
Not miss the deadline or have someone miss other work that they should be doing because we've put the pressure on them to do a, an application in less than two weeks.
We have tried to simplify the application process as much as possible, so it's essentially an outline of the activities that you would do in order to reach these goals, including, you know, a calendar of upcoming events that you might want to, to do, or just month-by-month what sort of activities you would do, as well as any local groups that you might want to partner with in order to do that.
Through the chair, I know Eric and the committee have been looking at this, and I think they already have an outline of what they would submit. It, it does take time to put the application, so we're grateful that you, you think of that aspect of it, because sometimes we get approval for something and then we're scrambling to get it done in anticipation. I think Eric has already started to take a look at it, talked to the committee, and they have some ideas. So my understanding is they could get it together sooner than later, but it would be nice to have the vote on the 18th if you are meeting and could do that.
That'll give us a chance, and then.
That gives us two weeks.
But I would voice my support for this anyway, going through the energy commission, committee anyway, being a unanimous decision, I would support this wholeheartedly, and it just, I'll go along with what the board is interested in.
Yeah, I would, I would offer my support as well, but.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why I want to go through. I just feel like that, you know, with two board members missing, and again, the, the ability, you know, as a mountain of community, some people come up to me and, and have discussions about things that they see in the meeting, and, you know, there's, there's different topics that, people bring ideas that I'd never even thought of before. So I'm, you know, I'm on board for it, but I just think that if we can wait, what, one week, right?
One week, yeah.
One week, let's go ahead and do that.
Discuss that. If there's any further information that comes forward, too, let us know on the 18th, and then hopefully we'll have a full board, and then we can decide on there. But as you can hear tonight, I think you have the support to move forward with this, but we'll take that vote on the 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, for coming in. We have no communications on the board selecting general items. We've got, let's see, now we have some gift exemptions. We'll get to those. I know we had one handed to us tonight, but we will go through these. So the senior, the, I guess the number we have in front of us on our agenda sheet is 545, and this is an additional $50, so it'll be $590, $595. So for the senior senator Elmer Fares, in memory of Joe Magnus, Cynthia Kozinski and John Lacco, $50. Richard and Irene Morrow, in memory of Joe Magnus, $25. First priority, in memory of Joe Magnus, is $100. Shai Velikin and James Curtis, in memory of Joe Magnus, $50. Greendale Physical Therapy, in memory of Joe Magnus, $150. John Dooley, in memory of John, Joe Magnus, $50. Ken Maffey and Ann Maffey, in memory of Joe Magnus, $50. Nancy Chabino and Joan Dunn, in memory of Joe Magnus, $25. Jeffrey and Ursula John, in memory of Joe Magnus, $50. Elizabeth Costello Searle, in memory of Joe Magnus, $20. And Janice Magnus, in memory of Joe Magnus, for $25.
Motion to accept a grant, too.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And from the fire rescue department, it's an anonymous donation of $70 for the fire department gift account. I'll just accept with gratitude. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. We have no proclamations. Town manager items. We have already taken care of that through the training facility request for the application for grant funds. We have no tabled items. Has the board members got anything? Okay. Any public comments? No? Ten minutes we have for August 8th, 2016. Any errors, omissions, comments? Being none, I'll enter, I'll accept them as presented.
So moved.
And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll make that motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank goodness.